But one piece of property is having to be acquired by eminent domain. So we are going to have that later in the agenda, but there's supposed to be a public hearing. Now, is anybody here that wishes to address us about the use of eminent domain to acquire 369 Persley Street? Anybody here that wants to talk to us about the use of eminent domain to acquire 369 Persley Street? No response being noted, that'll close the public hearing. Then let me go on now and convene this meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. This is our regular meeting for Tuesday, March the twentieth, twenty eighteen. And we will start our meeting as we usually do with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand as you are able? And let's receive an invocation from Pastor Willie Finney Junior, and then three of our GCAP students will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Let us power his. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we come to you right now, God. First of all, God, we just want to say thank you for everything you have done, God, for this community, for the city, for us as a people, God. God, we're praying right now, God, as we get ready to go into this meeting, God, that you would lead our mayor and our commissioners, God, to do what's best for the city and what's best for the people, God. Give them, God, the instructions from you, God, that everything will fall in order, God, and help us, God, to be unified, to come together as one with no hostility or animosity, God, but to do the right thing for our people. God, I thank you, God, for our commissioners and our mayor. Continue to bless them and watch over their family and watch over them, God, as they lead your people in this community. Continue to bless the city of Macon, and God, we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Our invocation tonight was given by Pastor Willie Finney Junior of the Smith Street Baptist Church. Pastor Finney started the We Read program, an after-school reading program, in order to impact the lives of youth within our community. Pastor Finney, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight to lead us, and great invocation. Our GCAP students, looks like all three of them may have left rats. I was going to introduce them. GCAPs stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, GCAPs. And they are from every high school throughout Bibb County. There are about thirty-two of them in the program, and they participate in a nine-month program to learn more about government and how it works. And tonight, we had Reese Ellis, who's a junior at Stratford Academy, where she has received faculty recognition each of her high school years. Additionally, Reese is active in the Georgia Secretary of State Student Ambassador's Program at her school. She's participated in last year's GMA Mayor's Motocade and was Youth Delegate to GMA Mayor's Day Conference this past January. We also had with us Faith Fabian, Faith that on the crown and the pink-colored jacket. She serves this year as Queen of the Cherry Blossom Festival. Faith is a junior at Mount de Sales Academy. From the time she was a young child, adults noted her unusual ability to communicate in ways beyond her years. Current affairs and politics have always been of great interest to Faith. Notably, Faith represented Macon-Bibb County this past summer in the Japan-America Grassroots Summit, traveling to Nara and Karobe, Japan. She's also a local school organizer for the Georgia Secretary of State Student Ambassador's Program, and we were pleased to have her with us. Like I say, she's serving also as queen this year. And Mandy Wong is a junior at First Presbyterian Day School, where she's a member of the Junior Beta Club and volunteers for several community service organizations in Macon. She represented us at the Georgia National State Fair last year in the peanut pole and was volunteering to keep Macon beautiful. Bring one for the Chipper Christmas Tree Recycling Event. So we are so proud of our GCAP students because all too often, we hear all the bad things about the young people and all the trouble they're getting into and the sorry, good-for-nothings that they're doing. But you know, every now and then, we just need to recognize the ones that are really doing great things and doing great things. Y'all help me recognize them and their participation and for being here with us tonight. Sorry, they got out of here before I could recognize them while they were still here. Next item on our agenda then would be approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. There was a special call meeting held on February twenty-seventh, where we discussed and passed a resolution concerning hotel motel tax, and then our regular pre-commission meeting of March the sixth and the regular commission meeting of March the sixth. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed. Oh, and I've also been reminded there was a public hearing on March the thirteenth of twenty eighteen, where we received public input, and those minutes have been prepared and distributed. So there are four sets of minutes. Are there any changes, corrections, additions? If not, can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Shepherd, second by Commissioner Schlesinger. No further discussion, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those four sets of minutes are approved. There are no invited guests tonight to be recognized, but each and every one of you are welcome. We're delighted that you are here. I did see Lester Miller, President of the School Board, came in, sitting on the back row there, so we certainly wanted to recognize him. Anybody else that we need to recognize? But we appreciate each and every one of you being here tonight. The next item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. This is your opportunity to talk to us about an item that is on the agenda for action later tonight so that we can hear you before we vote. Those of you that want to sign up or have signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item will be recognized a little bit later in the program. Commissioner Tillman, may I approach him?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to amend the agenda to add an item. Please, sir.
Tell us more.
It's in writing, and I even have the clerk's copy. It is the annual Mighty Rocks Easter Egg Hunt that's going to take place on March thirty-first. We supported it, we have the document last year. Basically, it reads the same, we just need to update it. It's the annual thirty-fourth annual community Easter egg hunt and to express appreciation to Attorney Forrest B. Johnson for his support of the event and for other purposes. And last year, myself and co-sponsor Lucas, we just need to update and get it on because the event is on March thirty-first.
Are you seeking to add this on to new business so that we refer it to a committee?
Old business.
Looking to add it as old business? Mister, where did my attorney want to meet him? Does this mean we need to suspend the rules to do this? Help me here, I'm a little out of the water, flopping around.
The commission has a discretion to amend the agenda to add new items. Normally, it is not required to go to committee. There just has to be a vote of five to do that, and this item would be necessary to do that because we do not meet again until after this event. So that's why the sudden, the purpose, now I'll read the resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Macon-Bibb County Commission and is hereby so resolved by authority of the same. The Macon-Bibb County Commission does hereby endorse and urge the private community to provide financial administrative support for the Mighty Rocks Thirty-Fourth Annual Community Easter Egg Hunt to be held at Central City Park from eleven a.m. to four p.m. on March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
So I'm assuming no obligation, no money on our part. This is basically just recognizing and encouraging others to support the Mighty Rock Easter egg hunt, is that right? Any questions or comments from the commissioners? If not, Commissioner Tillman makes the motion to add this as an item of old business. Commissioner Allen seconds that motion to add this. It would be item V, as in Victor, under old business then. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adding this item as item V under old business, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and we've got an Easter egg resolution on as item V. So you're going to have to remind me when I get there so that, because of Easter egg. All right. Anything else, may I approach him? Okay. All right, so back to the agenda now. And as far as the public comments on agenda items, we've got Mr. Forrest Edwards, who has signed up and wants to talk to us about District One representation. Mr. Edwards, are you here, sir? Oh, good, thank you very much, we appreciate it. If you would come down to the podium, sir, you're recognized for five minutes.
Greetings, Commissioner, Mayor.
And you may need to, you're right, adjust it so that...
Greetings, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm here tonight to voice my opinion on your attempts to make business carry on without a District One Commissioner for the next nine months. And your plans, as were proposed by your proposal to not have the funding available for an election, have you possibly heard back from the Election Board on whether they will fund that? I don't know.
Mr. Edwards, this is your time to talk to us. It's not really supposed to be a question and answer, period, but I'm sure that when we get to that item on the agenda, you will hear discussion about who was here from the Board of Elections when we discussed this earlier.
Well, I would like to say that I hope that y'all find the funding because it is important for the residents of District One. They pay taxes on property, ad valorem taxes on their cars. They're happy to live there and, you know, proceed with a very forward Macon attitude. I am concerned, though, that if it is that there is no election and there is no representation for the next nine months, that we will be living in a state of taxation without representation. This is quite serious in that this is how our country was formed in the revolution. So I would say I wish you great strength and decision-making powers and find the funds to have this election because it's important to the residents. They need representation in all taxes that are being proposed for future taxes, on property increase taxes maybe, boundary line changes, whatever. We need representation. We can't depend on y'all to fairly give us a part-time effort to give our voice to your decision-making. Case in point, we weren't able to have a vote to say so in your efforts to decide whether to replace or not to replace somebody until the fall elections. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Ms. Hunt, you wanted to talk to us about one agenda item and then later, I guess, talk to us about a non-agenda item, is that correct? You're recognized for five minutes at this point to talk to us about agenda items. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm in agreement with the gentleman there, I live in District One, and we're not being represented at this time, and that's not a good idea. And it says here that you, the command commissions, are an ordinance to deny the request for the appropriation of funds. I got a problem with that. And I think instead of us, while we doing our petition for the garbage ordinance, we need to go ahead and add this to our petition also. Next, of the resolution approving the list of sidewalks repairs, I hope you included Log Cabin Drive, that section between Hollinsworth Road and the apartments just before the credit union. That little strip, you put a slab of concrete and did not put drain tiles or anything in there. Like the rest of the whole street is fixed properly except that section that's right in front of black folk property. And to me, that's a discriminatory act. And I've had someone to come look at it, and they're supposed to be giving me a final decision on that because you are discriminating against those citizens that live in that little strip of land. Because you could have, if you did it on the opposite side, you did it on Log Cabin Drive on the other side of Emery, or Mercer University Boulevard, you did it from Mercer University Boulevard up to the first side driveway of the apartments, you did it from Hollinsworth Road to Naker Avenue, then that little strip in there should have, the sidewalks should have been prepared in the same proper way. And I hope you have included that strip of sidewalks in this ordinance that you have, in this resolution you have, to approve for doing sidewalks. We have got to be fair with everybody. We got to make sure that we're taking care of all of our citizens. I went through there after a rainstorm. It was ridiculous, the puddle of water that was right there just past that bridge that people would have to go through in order to walk on that sidewalk. They might as well be walking in the street. Then to try to walk through that puddle of water, they have to come off the side, off the bridge, go down into the streets to walk past that puddle of water. And that's not, I mean, we've paid for that to be done, and whoever approved that contract to be paid with that section, with the whole section of the street not being done properly, you did not do diligence as far as the citizen's money is concerned. And we think you need to take a second look at that, and that needs to be straightened out, and that needs to be done properly. If not, you're going to have another problem on your hands because citizens now are beginning to become a little more educated about what their rights are as far as what you are deciding to do with their money. It's not your money, it's our money. And when you're spending our money and you're saying that you're broke, you're not broke, the general fund balance is just broke. But you got other monies. Because if you didn't, you wouldn't be approving all these other things. You've got ninety-four million six hundred for this and ninety-four thousand six hundred for this and two, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, the money coming from somewhere. So if you're broke, you couldn't be spending that kind of money. Just tell the truth, the fund balance is out of order and need to be fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, we appreciate you being here and we appreciate your comments. Nobody else signed up for an agenda item, so we'll move on now to the next item on our agenda, and that's reports from our standing committees.
Mayor, I signed up for a different item, but I do want to speak for an agenda item.
Well, come ahead, Dr. Holiday, I'm sorry, I didn't have anything about your having signed up for an agenda.
You're right, I signed up, yeah, I didn't, I thought that something else was on the agenda, it's not, but something is on the agenda that I do want to speak about. I want to second or third, Mr. Edwards, we do need somebody sitting in that seat for the next nine months. And Ms. Hunt is correct that the money is there, y'all just are allocating it, and you need to allocate it, the drainage needs to be fixed there. And on item I, Fillmore Thomas Park, you know, I've come, there's a number of problems there. I've talked about storm water control there being improperly handled. A lot of erosion, looks like a moonscape. It would never pass, my organization, Soil and Water Commission, would never have passed what y'all have done there. I don't want to make, get a big stink, but y'all need to do a better job with the planning of these SLOPS projects. That Thomas-Fillmore Park, and I've talked to you about the sidewalk was broken. Y'all have done some patching of the sidewalk, that's great. But you know, that is going to be a park going from one artery to another artery. And if you don't have an emergency vehicle, one-lane traffic, you're going to have a law enforcement problem there. It's just common sense, this is the third time I've told you, that path needs to be strong enough to support a police car, and there should be regular patrols through Fillmore Thomas from Log Cabin Drive straight through the park up to the church, through the park and out Hollinsworth. It's critical. You're going to have law enforcement problems if you don't get a policeman that can drive through there because people can run through there. And policemen can't drive from Log Cabin all the way to Hollinsworth, it'd take five minutes to circle that. But you ought to be able to go straight through. Now's the time to design that project right. Here's another project, Project D, which is the alignment of intersection Georgia Avenue and Spring Street. I drove through that every day to work the past thirty years, two-hundred times a year, at least, times thirty years. And I'm going to not plan to retire anytime soon. That is a problem intersection. But I haven't heard any citizens are involved in this. I use it daily, I see wrecks there regularly. I should be consulted because I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee for a decade or more. I understand, you know, roads and I use it. And when y'all give these projects to these engineering firms, I've never even heard of this engineering firm, Triple Point Engineering. And they come up, they have a little short visit with citizens and say, we got citizen input. Well, they didn't, and I've never seen citizen input work on any road project in this county. So I know it's hard to do, but y'all do need to be thinking a little bit smart. You know, get the citizens involved. We've got ideas, we might can save, I know we can save you money. Y'all got so much on your plate, you don't have time to think about these things as deeply as somebody like me who actually visits this site and this site and this site. You need to depend on your knowledgeable citizens to help you with these projects instead of these consultants that are in the job simply to make money and run. Because it's really put us in a hole. It's put us in a hole because y'all depended on contractors to tell you what the citizens ought to be telling you. Contractors have just ripped us from garbage to the road improvement program. The contractors are making the money, the citizens are getting screwed.
I'm sorry, we had a sign-up sheet for people that wanted to address us on agenda items? Ma'am? Valerie Nguyen. Item zero.
Come ahead, please, ma'am.
Sorry, I put the wrong thing, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
No, that's perfectly right, they just didn't pull your form out of the book.
They didn't, they overlooked me. First of all, thank you for letting me speak to address the commissioners and yourself. I think I agree with second, third, and fourth of the people that have already spoken, Mr. Edwards. We need representation in our district, we don't need to have our representation empty. Who's going to speak for us for the next nine months? That's why we're all getting up to talk because we want to have our voice heard. We pay taxes, we want to have our voice heard in this community. So it's wrong for that seat to be empty for us, we have no one to speak for us. And I don't know if what you can do other than what the proposal is for the money for a special election, but we've got to find some money or we've got to do something to fill that seat, if not temporarily, and I don't know if that's in order, but some way to fill that seat so we'll have representation. If you shake your head and say there's no way to fill that seat, then we've got to find a way to do that because we cannot go nine months without representation on these committees. And a lot of this work's done behind the scenes, we don't see it, but the commissioners do, and they participate in that, and we want to have our voice heard through our commissioner. If not, we're going to keep coming to these meetings and getting up and standing and talking about all these things. And that's okay if you want us to do that. But we would like to be on the committee sides to hear what you're doing, what you're bringing forth here. That's where all the work goes, it doesn't happen here in front of this group, it happens in the committee meetings. We need to have people like us, like me, somebody to represent that district for the next nine months. And I know, again, like these people have been saying, there is money to be found somewhere, a small amount of money, I believe it was in the forty thousand dollar range, am I right? It's not four hundred thousand, it's not four million, what was it, forty thousand or something for a special election? We can find that money somewhere. So I ask that you please reconsider that and determine what you can do to help this district. If you do that to another district, they're all going to be in here fighting for it too. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, we appreciate you being here and appreciate your input. Next item on the agenda, committee reports, and the first committee, Operations and Finance, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Watkins. Vice Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on March thirteenth, twenty eighteen and took the following actions. The committee accepted the following grants, a summer twenty eighteen Georgia County Internship Program grant from ACCG to fund one intern for the county attorney's office and a second grant to fund two interns in the public defender's office. The committee also approved the following SLOPS projects, a professional consultant services agreement with MYD Golf for design services for bow and golf course in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, and an agreement with Triple Point Engineering for realigning of the intersection of Georgia Avenue and Spring Street in the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars. The committee approved the following items, an RFP regarding the administration of employees and retiree health benefits, the formation of a healthcare benefit committee to assist in the evaluation of the RFPs and to make recommendations to the commission related to plan, design, and implementation and the selection of the healthcare benefit providers. An amendment to the municipal advisory's agreement with Terminus Municipal Advisors LLC. We approved an agreement with Blasengame, Birch, Gerard, and Ashley for legal representation and potential litigation against contributors of the opioid addiction. And lastly, we approved an agreement with WLS Construction for Phase Two of Fillmore Thomas Park in the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand dollars and forty-five cent. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you by Chairman Watkins. Next committee report is Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas, Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on March thirteenth, twenty eighteen, and we took the following actions. The committee heard an update from Visit Macon, which used to be called the Convention and Visitors Bureau, from the Land Bank Authority and the Recreation Department. The committee also heard a report regarding opioids in the community. And the committee will continue reports from the Public Health Department at the next meeting. The committee heard an update from Alex Morrison regarding the Urban Development Authority's recent purchase of the Dempsey Hotel. And I need to add, the major question concerned the residents there, and we were assured that the rights of the residents would be protected and the Urban Development Authority would be working with Macon Housing Authority to ensure that those folks are taken care of. The members of this committee are Schlesinger Bivens, Lucas Watkinson, and Allen. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next committee report is Public Safety, and that will be given to us by Chairman Shepherd, Chairman Shepherd?
The Public Safety Committee also met on March thirteenth and took the following action. The committee approved the ordinance revising the business regulations regarding the operations of ambulance service in order to include the option of an advanced DMT. And that concludes the report of the... And that concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Shepard. Final report is Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins? I'm sorry, I turned on the wrong.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee met on March thirteenth, twenty eighteen. The committee met and approved the following items. We approved a list of sidewalk repairs priorities for submission to the Georgia Department of Transportation for consideration for a quick response safety funding award. The committee accepted the donation of two parcels of additional right of way along St. Clara Drive from the Central Georgia Joint Development Authority. The committee approved the exercise of eminent domain to acquire and fee simple a portion of the property commonly known as three sixty-nine Persley Street. The committee authorized the closure of an unopened alley off Riverside Drive in order to allow for the construction of a solar panel canopy at the Sheriff's Annex Building. This completes the report of the Facilities and Engineering Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. The next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. There are no applications for alcoholic beverage licenses that normally would appear here. So we'll move on to Old Business. And the first item of Old Business concerns a grant from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia for an intern in the legal office. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a summer two thousand and eighteen Georgia County Internship Program grant, the total amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars from the ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation that had been awarded to the Macon-Bibb County Attorney's Office to fund one internship for the two thousand and eighteen summer term and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a companion resolution for interns in the Public Defender's Office, also from ACCG, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of two summer two thousand and eighteen Georgia County Internship Program grant, the total amount of four thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars from the ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation that had been awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Public Defender to fund two internships for the two thousand and eighteen summer term and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Item C is a resolution concerning professional services at Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional consulting services agreement with MYD Golf LLC in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars for design services for the Bowden Golf Course to be paid by two thousand and eighteen SPOSS funds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item D is a contract with Triple Point Engineering to be paid out of twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Triple Point Engineering, Inc. for ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars to be paid from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds for the purpose of realigning the intersection of Georgia Avenue and Spring Street and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to put out an RFP for the administration of employee and retiree insurance benefits, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission requesting the mayor to issue a request for proposals for employee and retiree healthcare insurance benefits and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
Late doing it. My apologies.
No, that's perfectly right. Commissioner Jones?
Just for myself, I'm in I'm in favor of doing that, of course. I voted for it. I voted for it again. And I know this policy, this runs all the way through the end of this year, correct?
Right, the RFP, I think I think would be for the next calendar year.
Right, the current contract runs all the way through.
So what they're trying to do is get put out an RFP for the consultant that can help guide us through an RFP for insurance benefits, et cetera, to start on January January first of twenty nineteen.
It's what I. Current contract runs through twenty eighteen. I'm certainly open to us looking and if we can find somebody even terminating the other one, if we can find a better deal that will be better for employees and allow us to save some money. So I'm very open to us not going all the way through the end of the year, but yet send out the RFP and then even opening it up sooner than take effect twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item F is next, and that's a resolution to form a committee of people to kind of help evaluate healthcare benefits and pension proposals. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to provide for the formation of a healthcare and retirement benefits committee to assist in the evaluation of responses to the request for proposals for healthcare benefits and to assist in making recommendations to the Macon-Bibb County Commission related to plan, design, and implementation and the selection of healthcare benefit providers. And to assist in evaluating and making recommendations to the Macon-Bibb County Commission related to identifying and developing retirement plan options for new and non-invested employees and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes, I am so happy to see this because I it was my fear that we were gonna go ahead with some things and not have this committee in place. This is essential, that these folks be in place, not just at the end to rubber stamp anything because that's just not useful to anybody. But they will be a part of this process all the way through. And I think this will make for a better plan and people will accept the plan better if they have had input all the way through. So I wholeheartedly endorse the formation of this committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I've got Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, when we put this together, we're hoping sometime within the next thirty or forty-five days, will you be able to bring something back on your side? I think we have ours put together for the retirees as well as the person on the committee's outside person.
We will certainly act expeditiously. My recollection is that there are three members of one from each retirement plan.
Correct.
There are three active employees. The mayor pro temp and a designee, the county manager and a designee, mayor always designee, and a citizen at large for a total of thirteen, in my recollection. So we'll certainly move expeditiously.
You're exactly right, Mr. Mayor, but we had all, we sent, or I sent, to the county attorney people for those. We talked, I've talked with the people for those, the different locations that we talked about, the six people we had to have. And they've accepted. And the only ones we've not talked with is yours and the CEOs and was Mayor Pro Temp. I said, "There's a few that's left up on your side."
Again, I mean, we're not trying to delay this, so we will move expeditiously to form the committee.
Well, I'm just trying to, I saw some things. We're just trying to make sure it don't get lost in the shuffle.
Oh, trust me, it won't get lost in the shuffle.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the committee amendment, which is to form this committee signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the committee amendment for the resolution is adopted. Item G is next, and that's a resolution to continue to employ Terminus Municipal Advisors to help and assist us with some of these decisions, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement, an amendment to the municipal advisory agreement between Macon-Bibb County, Georgia and Terminus Municipal Advisors LLC, the financial consultant for Macon-Bibb County and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item H is a resolution to retain the services of a law firm to represent Macon-Bibb in connection with opioid addiction litigation, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Blasengame, Birch, Gerard, and Ashley P.C. for legal representation of Macon-Bibb County and potential litigation against contributors of the opioid addiction and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and that resolution is adopted. And next is a resolution to execute an agreement for construction of Phase Two of the Fillmore Thomas Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with WLS Construction, Inc. for the construction of Phase Two of Fillmore Thomas Park in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents to be paid from blight bond funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention, this on the Fillmore Thomas Park, I know that's in Commissioner Tillman's district. But I attended a meeting last week where, and you will recall that we had some citizens from that area here at the meeting who had some concerns. And I just want everybody to know that Commissioner Tillman met with the folks, had all of the interested parties there. And it's been, I think, what came out to be a win-win for everybody out there. You will recall, that's the area where, as a child, I kind of sneaked across that lake there when I wasn't supposed to and came up through that little opening and where there's a proposal for a roadway. And there wasn't enough room then for a road, so there certainly isn't enough room now. But they were able to work that thing out, and so I think that's the way it should be. And so I applaud all of them from the Bellevue area that worked with him on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a committee amendment to an ordinance to revise the staffing requirements for operation of an ambulance, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to revise business regulations regarding the operation of ambulance services in order to include the option of an advanced EMT to provide an adoption and effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Public Safety Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the committee amendment to the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the committee amendment to the ordinance is adopted. Item K is a list of repairs to sidewalks if we are lucky enough to get a quick response safety funding award from the Georgia Department of Transportation, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the list of sidewalk repair priorities prepared by the Macon-Bibb County Engineering Department for submission to the Georgia Department of Transportation for consideration for a quick response safety funding award and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept some additional right of way along St. Clara Drive, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance, the donation of two parcels of additional right of way along St. Clara Drive from the Central Georgia Joint Development Authority and from other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item M is a resolution to approve the use of eminent domain to acquire three sixty-nine Persley Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple a portion of the property commonly known as three sixty-nine Persley Street located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia and for other purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to close an unopened alley off of Riverside Drive, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the closure of an unopened alley off Riverside Drive as identified in the attached exhibit A in order to allow for construction of a solar panel canopy at the Sheriff's Annex Building and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to deny the request for the appropriation of funds for the, from the general fund balance for the special election, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia to deny the request for the appropriation of funds from general fund balance to pay for the cost of a special election in May for the vacant District One commission seat and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you. While we're not really here to discuss and go back and forth, as the mayor said, I think the public and Ms. Nguyen, Mr. Edwards, and others are due an explanation. It leaks from my point of view. So it's really not a money consideration to me personally. Money should always be considered, but that wasn't the main factor. What we were, and it was a double-edged sword. We need somebody in that seat and, you know, Gary Bechtel was a valuable contributor. He and I didn't always agree, and sometimes we butted heads, but I was glad he was here and I wish he was here now. But he chose to run for another race. So, we were looking at an election in less than seventy days. We were looking at a qualifying process in less than twenty-five days now. My concern personally was, were we gonna have time for a qualified person to think about it? You know, running for office is a big commitment. And would we have enough time for people to consider to run and want to run and have time to do that? Would the public have time to vet those candidates and determine, are they a good representative that they might want to vote for? Now, when you go to, if we had it, when you go to the polls, I think there's four districts, you get a card from the polling person and you get in line to vote for all those other races. And then when you're done, guess what you gotta do? Number one, are you gonna remember to do it? Did the poll worker remind you, hey, there's a Commission One election here as well? And then if you say, oh, yeah, I meant to do that as well, then you gotta get in another line and get another ticket to do that as well, then you got to get in another line and get another ticket and get back in line and vote again. So it was a very cumbersome process is what you would have to experience. Again, in my mind, the consideration would be, did we have, and I even tried to get a couple people to run. Maybe some of you would want to run. But those were my concerns personally, and that's why I voted against it, not because of money. Money's always important, but because of that cumbersome process and probably not enough time for the public to vet those people and for quality people to consider, yeah, I would run.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This was actually, usually when we were at planning and zoning, we never did a resolution in this manner. We would always do it in the affirmative, and then we would defer it or just deny it, but we would never put forth a resolution saying we were going to deny something first. This was originally my resolution calling for this election to take place fairly soon, trying to get it on the May twenty-second ballot, and as the Commissioner Jones has stated, several issues came up. From the Supreme Court to local municipalities, people are suing and going to court about voter irregularities, and it was just so difficult, and with all the, with all the things that the Board of Election would have to do, there were not many municipalities that we looked at that had done this before, and we just thought it would cause so much confusion. As far as representation, this commission votes, just like we're doing tonight, in unison on all agenda items regardless of what district it's in, regardless of what committee it comes out of, or who sponsors the resolution. One thing about Commissioner Bechtel that I will say is that he has supported funds and funding all of our districts when it come to blight projects in many areas, and so, and we all do the same, and so just know that you're going to be represented overall, but I do understand what you mean as far as the seat, but I wish, and we've asked all the questions, can we appoint someone, and I think it has to be within a year, and the seat has two and a half years on it, and so we really have tried everything, and for me as well, it was more of the confusion that would happen, and so I just hope the citizens understand, and please feel free to come down, be a part of the committee, be a part of this meeting, and ask any commissioner whatever you need and your desire is in your district, and we'll try and accommodate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tillman, and in further regard to that, let me call on the county attorney to talk briefly about what we tried to do to see if we could get this election scheduled on the twenty-second and the next available date.
Well, Commissioner Tillman is completely accurate that he asked us to look at what the requirements were and whether this board could, this commission could appoint someone to fill position, but the charter provides that that can only be done during the last year of the term, and as Commissioner Tillman indicated, two and a half years left in former Commissioner Bechtel's seat. Also, Commissioner Jones is absolutely correct that the process that is available for the Board of Elections to consider is extremely cumbersome because we, if we had been within, if we had had the opportunity to call election ninety days before the election, then we could have had the election in conjunction with the other election, but we were just inside that ninety-day period, so it requires there to be two elections held simultaneously at the same voting location, so there was concern about the confusion among the commissioners, there was concern by the commissioners about the confusion that that might cause voters, as succinctly indicated by Commissioner Jones. So every avenue was looked at to try and look at possible alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, excuse me, all in favor of the ordinance denying the funds requested, that would be the last thing I would say, that the Board of Elections indicated it would cost approximately thirty to forty thousand dollars to try to do this cumbersome process, and that was, so the resolution is to deny that request for additional funding. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next, item Q, whoop, I think I skipped one, I'm sorry, item P is an appointment to the Board of Health, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution, excuse me, a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing Patrice N. Walker, M.D., to the Macon-Bibb County Board of Health, does it see Paul A. Mossman, M.D., and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item Q is an appointment to the Transit Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing Tom Ellington to the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Tillman, got you first, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I've had the pleasure once of picking Tom Ellington up as he was standing in front of Wesleyan waiting on the bus to give him a ride home, and I can assure that he is one of those people that ride the bus, and he looks forward to riding the bus, he shared and told me. A couple of weeks ago, I joined the director, Craig Ross, and riding the bus also, and it was a great experience, and I encourage others. What was interesting about the bus route that we took was that it was, it went walking distance from my home, and it actually put me off right in front of City Hall, and I had never known that there was a bus that actually did that, and so we're going to be very soon having experience with showing the kids and bringing the kids down and showing them and young folks how to ride the bus as well, and so this is something great, and he looks forward to doing this, as he's already stated earlier in our pre-commission meeting, and so I encourage other commissioners to take the opportunity with Craig Ross and ride the bus in your area or someone's area, and get to know the people and see what their experience is. It really was a great experience, and I thank the Macon Transit Authority for all they're working, for all they do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
I just have to agree with Mayor Protem Tillman on this, and add my endorsement of Dr. Ellington. He's a professor at Wesleyan. He's a former member of the Macon City Council. He does walk a lot and ride the bus a lot. He is also the chair of the Pedestrian Safety Review Board that's working to decrease our pedestrian deaths in this community. He's very much involved and very concerned, and so just wanted to add, years ago, we did not have citizen, we didn't have users of transit on the authority, and I was very proud to introduce the legislation that asked our local delegation to create two more positions for citizen, for users of transit, and they passed it. They passed it. It became law, so very pleased that he is one of the users of transit, and I'll be voting for him.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to sell the Ed Four Sports Complex to the Bibb County Board of Education, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the sale of the Ed Four Sports Complex to the Bibb County Board of Education for three million eight hundred thousand dollars and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to settle litigation regarding stormwater at or around forty-one thirty-five Canyon Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement and release for the settlement of the alleged claims of John Lewis and Rachel Lewis against Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, so as to provide for the replacement of the drainage pipe on the Lewis's property at four-one-three-five Canyon Road based upon the determination that the replacement of the existing drainage pipe, which extends into the public right-of-way, will serve the public interest by preventing a potential hazard to the general public and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. Got one no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item T, which is a resolution pertaining to a lease agreement at Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Jack Dean in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars per year for the golf pro shop at the Bowden Golf Course in substantially the same form attached heretofu as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item U is a companion resolution, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Jack Dean to provide golf lessons, activities, and services, as well as sell merchandise in the golf pro shop at the Bowden Golf Course in substantially the same form attached heretofu as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next, there's supposed to be an item V for an Easter egg hunt.
Yes, sir.
And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to endorse and urge the private community to provide financial and administrative support for the Mighty Rocks Thirty-Fourth Annual Community Easter Egg Hunt, and to express appreciation to Attorney Forrest V. Johnson for his support of this event and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Got a motion by Commissioner Watkins, second by Mayor Protem Tillman, is that right? Okay. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Mighty Rock, people hear that name, his real name is Robert Roberts. He was an agriculture inspector, and he also was a local DJ who played many years ago on WIBB. He has since passed away, and his son and a motorcycle group, along with some community leaders, keep the legacy of the Mighty Rock Easter Egg Hunt going, and now it's in its thirty-fourth year, and last year we supported it, and this is now the official and only one that I think, overall, the Community Easter Egg Hunt, and so I implore that we continue to support it in years to come.
Good. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. That ends the old business. We'll go now to new business. There are only a couple of items of new business that have been, that have come down from legal at this point. The first is a resolution to authorize and approve the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Ag Pro LLC for the purchase of John Deere Fifty-G Compact Excavator for Parks and Beautification in the amount of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars to be paid from the Parks and Beautification Capital Improvement Budget. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further evaluation and study. Item B is an appointment to this new committee that we're setting up to look for Macon-Bibb County Health Care and Retirement Benefits Committee. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. That's all the new business that has been prepared, but I would urge you to look at the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoons, because during the rest of the week, we'll have additional resolutions and ordinances that are prepared by the legal department that come down. They are included on the agenda that's published on Friday afternoon, and discussion on those items will take place beginning at nine o'clock Tuesday morning, next Tuesday, I think that's the twenty-seventh, in the committee room behind us. So check that agenda for additional items that may be of interest to you. That brings us now to the public comments on non-agenda items, and we have several people that have signed up to talk to us tonight about non-agenda items. The first one is Chet Novak, who wants to talk to us about blight in Macon. Mr. Novak? Yes, sir. You are recognized for five minutes, sir. We appreciate you being here. Thank you for your patience.
Before I start out on my main agenda, there are three minor points I'd like to point out. Number one, I've always believed a stitch in time saves nine, and there's been a lot of talk about the roads in Macon. I would like to present this YouTube address, which is an eight-minute and forty-six-second lesson on how to prepare roads to repair them so that they do not require to be rebuilt year after year after year. So I would just leave that with the board, the commission, I mean, I'm sorry. Secondly, I would appreciate it if the handicap doors were unlocked on the nights of commission meetings. I could not get in there tonight. It was locked from the outside.
We'll take note of that. We're supposed to do that.
Yeah, it was open, the last time I was here, it was open from the inside. I don't know if it was open from the outside, but it did open from the inside. Thirdly, excuse me, allergies. Two weeks back, two meetings back, I'm sorry, not two weeks back, two meetings back, I feel I was slighted by the mayor. I had come in late. I did not get onto the signup slip on time, and at the end of the meeting, I asked to talk. I was not allowed to because of that reason. However, a gentleman who had accompanied another gentleman who was on the signup slip was standing at the podium, and the mayor invited him to talk without having even been on the signup slip, and I took that as great offense, just so you know. Now about the blight in Macon, and I proposed this to, I proposed this to the mayor also probably six, seven, eight months ago, and not hearing from him directly, when I went to retrieve my materials back, the answer I got from his secretary was that he already had this program. I am what is known as a HUD two-oh-three-k homeowner consultant. I am approved by HUD and necessary for anybody that wants to purchase a house and rehab it, or has a home that they want to rehab using FHA money. In the entire state of Georgia, if you pull up the list from HUD, there are a total of fifty-nine names that will come up. Within, I'm going to guess eighty miles up here, I'm the only consultant. I've been asked even to go to Washington, Georgia, which I don't even know where that is, but that's how far away consultants are apart in the state. This program can be used, it is designed to be used to reuse existing housing stock. It can be any kind of reuse. It can be, you can knock a whole house down and just use the existing foundation or footings or slab, whatever was there, as long as the house does not end up upside down. You can have up to a hundred to a hundred and ten percent after-repair value loan on the property, providing, of course, that the purchaser qualifies for it. I will be glad to answer any questions on this. It's a fairly simple but a fairly lengthy discussion of how this happens. It requires a feasibility study. It requires a work write-up that has to be done in HUD's format. It allows for draw inspections for contractors that want to do the work but don't have the funds to do it all, and want to take a draw after two or three weeks, or a month, or after ordering supplies, or whatever. My position is there to protect three entities, and they're I'm there to protect the home buyer or homeowner. I'm there to protect the contractor, and I'm there to protect the lender or FHA. I would be glad to discuss this with anybody on the commission that is willing to, um, consider this as a way of helping to get some of this blight in Macon taken care of. I heard the name, I think it was Commissioner Blacktell, is involved in the, uh, housing blight, and I'd be more than happy if he reached out to me. I have business cards here with me tonight that I can pass out to anybody who would like them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Novak. We appreciate you being here, and appreciate that offer, and appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Uh, uh, next, I have Darren Latch, who wants to talk to us about taxes and mismanagement. Uh, Mr. Latch, thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Thank you again for the time. That's my favorite subject. Um, unfortunately, is keeping our taxes at a reasonable level that, uh, includes responsible management. Now, not many of you people here have set payrolls. That, in my opinion, is shocking that you're up there and don't know how to manage a budget properly while maintaining an income versus an outgoing. Some of you may have seen on Facebook, I was ranting and raving a little bit today about getting the, you removed from office. I have sought some legal advice in regards to that and know the course that needs to be done, but unfortunately, it's gonna be too late. You have a responsibility to all taxpayers here, taxpayers and non-taxpayers. We can't afford to live here anymore. You're talking about putting millage rates up if you don't get this, or if you don't get that. Please, manage the budgets with what you've got. You swore an oath on a Bible to do the right thing by us. You're not doing the right thing. All we hear, I've been here for nine years now, all we hear is taxes, tax that, we need to grab more here, let's shift some over here. I recall an IOU from the former city which has never been accounted for, which suddenly got washed away when cons- consolidation happened. There, there's Bowden Golf Course. I'd like to know how many people from Macon Bibb actually frequent that golf course? What percentage of the, the population here, what, just under a hundred thousand now? What do you get? Five hundred? But you're gonna sink another three hundred thousand dollars and pay another consultant forty-five thousand? Pay another cons- consultant thirty thousand? For what? How far in the red does it need to sink before you bail on it? Make them stand up on their own two feet like we have to? If we can't afford to eat, we don't eat. You need to swap it around some. You know, work together. Get rid of all your little petty differences and work together for us. You know, I don't want to be up here. I hate public speaking. I don't want to be here. I would need you guys to please do what you're supposed to be doing for our benefit, not for your own, not for your friends, not for your consultants, not for your buddies at the golf course, whatever it is. We have addressed this issue once before, and everybody ridiculed our group, which was quite significant in size, of a pending fifty-two million dollars going missing from Bibb County. Everybody ridiculed us. We'll, we'll, uh... I can't think of the word at the moment. We, we, we were in dreamland. We were racist for what we're doing and so on and so forth. Well, look at the news. How many indictments, grand jury indictments are going out now chasing down that money and those involved in it, and the payoffs also involved in it? Now, some of you have put your hand up to run for mayor again. I would suggest for you that you rally your county commissioners, get this right without your hand out for more money and begging the state to change the laws so you can get more money from more loss, s- splosh, loss, O-loss, T-loss, whatever it's going to be. And manage with what you've got. I have to, my family has to, these people have to. We don't have a government income, government pension, and, and increase as soon as the city consolidated with the county of what, between thirty thousand and ninety thousand dollars from what I was reading? Please, manage with what you've got, the same as what we have to. You know, representation is what we're talking about before. Yeah, show, show respect for each of the commissioners. We saw a witness before where one county commissioner was heard all the way through what they wanted to say with respect. Another county commissioner said what they wanted to say, and there was a chuckle and laughter in what he said, being trying to be taken seriously. That's not right. This here, as a collective, is supposed to represent this, as a collective, not your own little petty differences. Right? But a key to that is getting it right with what you have. Don't dig the hole further and dig us deeper into the hole. Some of us can barely afford to eat and feed our children and take them to, to better their lives and improve, and hopefully get them up to your positions one day and doing the right thing, 'cause we've taught them right. Please, manage with what you have. Don't mess with our finances any further because we can't take it anymore. And we're watching things like the golf course and all these little special interest things which are getting grants provided to them, which is fine. If you can find grants for it, more power to you, and I congratulate you. But don't dip into our pockets any further. We've got a hole burned in our pockets like you'd not believe. And it may, what I earn is nothing in comparison to what you earn. So, when you're talking about millions, or tens, or hundreds of dollars, the trash collection, paying upfront for a twelve-month's worth of service that we don't get service for. You know? The gentleman's here before mentioned blight. I tell you what, I'll take, one, I'll, anybody volunteer from here, I'll gladly chauffeur you around. And Mayor Rickett's seen how I act in person, in private as well. I act quite professionally. I will take you around. I'll provide drinks and food for you. Drive with me, and I will show you the blight that's not getting attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Latch. We appreciate your time.
I appreciate your time, and please do work on it.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Dr. Holliday? Dr. Lindsey Holliday? I, I guess, and, and he may have included his comments in what, Duncan Soror, who wants to talk to us about bus routes. Duncan Soror, hey, Mr. Soror. How are you, sir? You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Commissioner Elaine Lucas for her, uh, swift reply to my email a few weeks back regarding the intersection where Spring Street meets, uh, North Avenue under I-16, or also a gray highway, every highway are. It was a pretty dangerous intersection already for pedestrians, um, since there were no tr- stop, no traffic lights, no stoplights, no signs, so you just kinda had to guess it when you're trying to cross the road. And then they put up a barrier that blocked off the sidewalk. So, the only way for pedestrians to access the sidewalk is either climb over the barrier or walk along the side of the barrier, which is, you know, dangerous, not, uh, also a little humiliating. But, uh, I contacted the commissioner, and, uh, she contacted Department of Transportation, and the next time I was there, there was an opening, so it's an improvement, I guess. And regarding the bus routes, I know a, a couple of weeks back, last time I was at the meeting, um, I believe a grant was approved to a higher group to assess the bus routes. And, uh, like I said, I know that's probably, it's going to be a very, fairly lengthy process, but, uh, just something I wa- was just gonna suggest personally, something that would affect me personally, but I assume would be, uh, beneficial to a lot of other people. For example, so where I, where I live nearby on Tom Hill slash Northside, uh, I feel it'd be, be really helpful if there was a, a route that went from that area, Tom Hill, Northside, Forest Hill, that area, uh, more directly to Zebulon Road. There's just so many places that aren't too far away that I, I just feel like the transit, the routes, plus the transit, uh, system, um, to get a transit to get another bus, and so many other factors are really inefficient. So... Um, there, there are numerous examples, numerous areas where it may be looked at. But just from my personal view, uh, just a route that more easily connects Northside Drive, Tom Hill, Forest Hill, with areas on Zebulon, Wesleyan Drive, and also, for example, uh, Coliseum Northside Hospital, which isn't too far away from where I live, but I have to take a transit all the way down, downtown, and then all the way back, just be able to get to the hospital just, uh, just a few miles down. So, yeah, just, um, whatever group or commission that was that was in the responsible of looking at the bus routes, just, you know, just implore, just, uh, really encourage them to look at it very holistically, and just, just have it to be as practical, as helpful, and as efficient as it possibly can as we, uh, look to change these bus routes that have been the same since nineteen ninety-nine. All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Soror. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Calvin Palmer? Ms. Palmer, thank you very much for, for being here and for your patience. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Uh, I do wanna talk about the, uh, tax situation. I am a small business owner here in Bibb County, and, uh, can y'all hear me? And, uh, I'm a small business owner, and we're talking about, uh, some things that I'd like to just do some math with you for a minute. I hope your eyes don't glaze over when I talk about math, but you're talking about a, um, five millage rate increase on, on property. You're talking about an O-loss. You're talking about in May twenty-second, we're talking about a T-splosh. If we go with both the, both of the sales taxes, we'll have the highest sales tax in Georgia. It'll be eight point nine, I think is Fulton County. We'll be at nine percent. Uh, as a small business owner, I do recognize that people don't see anything except I'm not gonna pay nine percent. I go out of the county to buy what I wanna buy if we go up on that sales tax. They will not buy in Bibb with the, with the, um, Amazon coming. Uh, they would, of course, order large-ticket items from Amazon, which right now, you don't pay sales tax, where if you, even if you worked on that, you'd still have people in Wilkston County, Houston County, and places like that that would order. It would not come in to Macon to buy because of the high sales tax. Let's talk just a minute about the five millage rate increase on property. Uh, two things about that, that, uh, we probably don't understand is that... The first thing is that millage rates apply not only to real property, which most people, that's what they're affected by. It also applies to personal property. Personal property is that property that's owned by businesses and by people who have equipment in businesses, and that's called inventory tax a lot of times by, uh, the, uh, tax people and stuff like that. But that's personal property. So, when you have a business like a food store, which I know Harvey's has now gone out of Macon, Georgia, and we've had several K-Marts and Targets and Sears and so have left, these stores that have to buy a lot of inventory at the end of the year, then this affects them. They either have, have to go up on prices or try to absorb this five millage rate increase on their personal property, their inventory. They have to raise prices, which competition won't let them do that. So, that precludes them being able to survive, and so they do move, they do close up. A five millage rate also, here's the second big point. What we've said is we want to raise this millage rate in order to compensate the employees of the county. Now, let's look at the players. What have we got? We've got the government. This is the government you see of Bibb County right here. All right, then you've got the people who work for the government. That's the eighteen hundred employees we've got. Then you've got a hundred fifty-three thousand people, us. That's what we've got. Now, we're all included in the hundred fifty-three thousand, but it's almost like we're trying to pit the hundred fifty-three thousand to tax them to make sure that the employees get paid as they should get paid. Well, the only po- problem with that is, guess what? Those employees have to pay that five millage rate increase too. So, to keep them even, when you, if you got a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, that's three hundred dollars more a year, you'll pay them property taxes. To keep that even, you would have to collect another million dollars in taxes to keep them even, because you're not gonna pay them three hundred dollars, you're gonna have to pay them five hundred dollars because of taxes to net them out at three hundred. So, just to keep a status zero, you take the money out of this pocket, and you put it over here in this pocket. And so, you gain nothing by a five millage rate increase in, in taxes. All right, now, to take that just a s- small step further, when you're talking about raising millage rate, what does that do to property values in a city? People don't wanna live in a city, do they, Mallory? If they, uh, got a high millage rate, Centerville is a prime example. Centerville is a high millage rate, uh, part of Houston County. People don't want to buy in Centerville because the millage rate is so high. So, people finally throw up their hands and say, I can't afford the taxes. They leave. People come in, they wanna buy a house, they check taxes. They're too high. If you want to do something, lower millage rates, make property values go up. Make people want to spend more. Property values will go up. Then you will collect more taxes. If you wanna bring in more business, lower sales tax. Give us back those splosh numbers, and more people will come into Macon and buy. If you raise taxes, you are essentially, what you're going to do is drive business, the sales that you say in local ops and sales tax, you won't have the sales in order to collect the taxes. You, this will not give the employees that, that we have for the county, and they do deserve to keep their job, but it will not give them what they want. It will actually be a detriment to their pay. They will actually lose three hundred dollars. Now, there's a lot of solutions to these problems. You could give the employees of Bibb County so you don't pay any property tax. That'll be fine, or you don't pay the increase, or whatever. You could do a lot of things. You could take the twenty-five million we're, we're spending on healthcare, and you could give each one of those employees an eight thousand dollar, uh, HSA fund that they could use to buy their own insurance, and you'd be saving about eleven million dollars a year. You could fire Blue Cross Blue Shield and save that million dollars a year, and you could fire these people who you're paying eight hundred thousand dollars a year to.
Mr. Palmer, your time is up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good, gracious. Just trying to get his attention. Just trying to get his attention. Is, anything else to come before us? Have we got a point of personal privilege? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Tillman?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you. Uh, this is, this is a government facility, and, uh, order is, uh, is asked, please. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, uh, recognize and thank our, um, PR person, uh, Chris Floor. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, Ms. Lucille Mays, a Bellevue resident, a long citizen of Bellevue, spent fifty years, uh, helping the Boy Scouts and her community, and our community... And our community, uh, and so this government sponsored a resol- resolution or proclamation to present to her. I was given the wrong proclamation. The funeral services were at one PM, and at twelve-thirty, I discovered that I was given the wrong, uh, proclamation. Our PR person, who did not give me the wrong proclamation, Chris Floor, uh, I called him, and he hand-delivered it to me. He left, uh, City Hall, I actually left Luncheula earlier, to come to make sure that, uh, we had the correct proclamation. So, I just wanted to publicly thank him, uh, 'cause that's what sometimes we don't often hear about, those employees that go above and beyond. And, uh, that family and Ms. Mays, uh, we bless and thank her, and, uh, the Mays family, who's done so much for this community, and they, uh, are, are well-deserved. And thank you, uh, Chris, and I wanted to say that publicly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Tillman. Ms. Hunt, you're right. I, I overlooked your, your non-agenda comments that you wanted to make to us. Sorry. And, and that election, I believe, is gonna be scheduled in November now. I don't think that's gonna happen, but thank you very much, Ms. Hunt. We, we appreciate you being here. Uh, a- any further point of personal privilege? Well, you, it, you, you, you form indication, you wanna talk about taxes and both the agenda item and non-agenda item. Do, do you have a non-agenda item that you wanted to discuss with? Ma'am? Vi- very good. Do, we'll, we'll come back, Ms. Win. Uh, we certainly don't wanna shortchange you. Come, come back. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you. First of all, the man in the yellow t-shirt that got up and left, I'm glad he has Mrs. Lucas to respond directly to his, any questions he has. We don't have that in District One anymore. Taxes. And you're right, the gentleman that's already been up here made it very clear how we feel. I'm a native Maconite. My husband's a native Maconite. He'll kill me for talking. But I wanted to say that we love this community. We've lived here all our life, and we don't plan on leaving. But I tell you, you're making it mighty hard for us and the other citizens of this community when you talk about raising the millage rate, raising our property taxes. We've been carrying a lot of this community on our back through property taxes. We've always paid them. O-splosh, again, we will be the highest taxed county in this state. Why are we trying to chase citizens away? Shouldn't be, we be asking to have more citizens come with lower taxes, lower millage rates? I worked for a large employer in this community, and when I ask, I worked with the management coming into town, when I asked them where they lived, Houston County, Monroe County. Why? Taxes and school system. I'm sorry if, if Mr. ... I'm sorry if Mr. Mallory's still here, but taxes and school system. We need to try to attract people to our community, not chase them away with higher taxes, higher millage rates, O-splost, T-splost, whatever we're having to vote on in upcoming elections. I just think we need to really consider tightening the budget however you can without putting it back on the taxpayers' backs even further. And I hope that you, your eyes and your minds didn't glaze over with this gentleman that came up and spoke about taxes and all the numbers. Sometimes I think we get up here and you just look at us and just stare and don't really care what we think or what we're saying, but I hope that's not true. I'm looking at you, Mr. Tillman, I hope that's not true. I hope it's not true for any of you that you listen to your citizens when we come up here and speak to you about things that are important to us, to keep us here, to keep us happy in this community. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Win, we appreciate you being here.
Except I'm available as an interim commissioner.
No other points of personal privilege, can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we adjourn. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.